Looks like we, I had the password.
It might just be us.
I don't know, I can't. Okay.
All right, it is 6:30 PM. We will call tonight's meeting to order and we'll start off with a roll call of the members. Myself, Matt Yeton, present, Susan Wood.
Present.
John Christ.
Yep.
Phil Lamru.
Present.
Michael Bouchard is excused tonight. Molly McCann.
Here.
Neil McGyver.
Present.
And Bradford Puffer, who is also excused tonight. Welcome, everyone. Welcome, the audience. We'll start off with a review of the minutes from November 20th Planning Board meeting.
I only saw one very small typo on page eight. Second paragraph, almost near the bottom of that paragraph. It starts with "Members and staff." At the end of that, "To adjust then," it says "the."
Move to accept the minutes from the November 20th meeting.
Second.
If there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions, I abstain. And I'd just like to comment, thank you to the staff for adding page numbers. Very helpful in the review. All right, we'll move on to any public comments that are not related to any of the issues on the agenda tonight. Anyone online with us, Joseph, at this time?
We do have one member of the public online.
Perfect. For any of the public, members of the public online, if you would like to comment tonight, please use the icon to raise your hand, at which point Joseph will get hold of you and will call you forward to share your comments. Thank you very much for your attendance. Joseph, communications received.
Yeah, one communication, kind of a key communication, actually. Lakes Region Planning Commission, and maybe John will share more about this, but is updating the Lakes Region Regional Plan, first time since 2015, I believe. There is a link to a survey on that flyer. You can also find it on the Lakes Region Planning Commission website. Definitely encourage anyone who's interested to fill out the survey. That'll help inform the update to the regional plan, Lakes Region Planning Commission's Regional Plan. This is actually going to be the first time they do this since Plymouth has joined the Regional Planning Commission, so actually a good opportunity for people in Plymouth to weigh in.
Excellent. Thank you. And with that, we'll roll into reports of the committees. John, do you have any from LRPC?
Excuse me. Obviously, there's the Regional Plan is being updated, so just like we have our own master plan, there's the regional kind of master plan as well. And other than that, we are off as of this month for the winter months. But before then, we had a pretty good presentation from Shannon Saunders, the director, about exactions and offsite impacts, mostly about exactions, but how they relate to some other pieces as well, including the difference from offsite impacts. And I think it was very informative. I think there's a lot of people who, when you hear exaction, they say, oh, offsite impact, that's very complicated, whereas exactions can be a bit more straightforward. And so it was a very informative presentation, and I will not fill you in all the details right now, just to say my voice, but.
Thank you. Appreciate your comment. When do you reconvene again?
I think it's March.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Molly?
What year did Plymouth join the LRPC?
John?
We came from North Country Council.
Yeah.
Yeah, my.
Member of the state.
I'm gonna.
After 2015.
It was after 2015. It was after 2018. It might have been right around 2019, but don't quote me on that. I don't actually recall the exact year.
Just curious.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Within the last 10 years, but.
All right. Thank you. Sue, do you have any updates from the CIP?
Yes, you all got, I think Joseph sent the latest CIP information to everyone, and hopefully you were able to review it. And if there's anybody that has any comments about it, or would like to see anything different or questions, I think we'd like to give this our blessing, if it's okay with everyone, and send it on to the Select Board.
Did everyone have enough time to review it, or feel comfortable with reviewing it right now?
I did not review it deeply. I'm inclined to trust Sue at the committee.
They looked at the bottom line, which is the important part.
And they did take, they did put the 3% in for the.
Yeah, I thought that was, I thought that was important.
Yeah, great.
And I think one thing to remember for this is that CIP was dormant for several years, and it's just been, this is the third year. So, you know, to really see, get the taste of this, we've got another couple of years before you're really gonna see some consistency rolling through. So, you know, they're really, Scott and everyone, they're just doing a great job.
It sounds like the town administrator really appreciates having this for guidance, which, you know, I think in the past, the town didn't rely on it very much. And, you know, if it's useful, then I think it's great that we should continue with it.
I agree, and I think it helps the department heads, too.
Yeah, I agree.
Gives them something to reach out. So, no, I agree with you.
Great. Thanks for leading that up, Sue.
Yes, thank you.
Is the consensus that we feel comfortable putting this vote to the Select Board?
I move to send the CIP report to the Select Board.
I'm gonna abstain from the motions, but I'll vote.
Second.
Excellent. If there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions? Excellent. Thank you very much for your due diligence, Sue.
Sure.
And your hard work. We appreciate it. And to the rest of the committee.
That's right, the rest of the committee, they just, everyone worked diligently at it, the department heads.
Thank you. Any other reports from anybody?
Economic Development Committee, this week, we met on Monday. There was further discussion of engaging co-op extension to do their community business engagement program. So, we're gonna be reaching out to Sue Kegel to invite her to come speak with us about how the program actually works, when we would be able to get started with them, what their timelines are, et cetera. And it's basically a program to help us reach out to any and all of the business owners in the town, so that we have a better survey of who is conducting business in the town, so that we can understand what would help them. And it could, when we do it, it would be a matter of deciding on scope, and they would help us create surveys and do that outreach, so that we can figure out next steps for the committee.
Awesome. So, that's already a model that they use at the co-op extension?
Yes.
UNH co-op extension?
Yes.
Excellent. Is there been any discussion of, above and beyond the existing businesses we have, about a arm of attracting new businesses, and things that don't exist already?
There has been some discussion of that, and the, most of the discussion has been focused on what are the, what are the problems that exist for current businesses, with the hopes that those problems would also then connect to barriers that future businesses might encounter.
Excellent.
Yeah. So, but other discussion with staff, there's a lot to talk about still, and we're still kind of formulating the path. But certainly, there are topics on the horizon that could address future business development.
Great. Thank you very much for the update.
Thank you.
Yeah, keep us in the loop with the work with the co-op and the extension.
Yeah.
That looks like. Phil?
Could I offer a brief update on the Select Board activity, in that the budget hearings are starting on Monday with individual departments, and there will be department budget hearings every Monday for the next three weeks.
And does the actual head of the department come in and meet with the Select Board?
Yeah, so the department heads have submitted their budget requests to the Select Board, and kind of they've all been summarized, and this is an opportunity to discuss those with the departments.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
That's the information, the schedule is on the town website for the Select Board, but for anybody who's listening now, and maybe hasn't looked at the website, just wanted to get that out there in case anybody has an interest.
Perfect. So, if they find the calendar on the website for the Select Board meetings, it'll be listed. Superb. Thank you so much. Any other reports? I think we covered all the committees in attendance. Great. Thank you very much. All right, we'll move on to a public hearing on the Fairgrounds Road Residential Overlay Zoning Amendment. I'll briefly give a synopsis of what this discussion will be about. The Board will hold a public hearing on this potential zoning amendment being considered for town meeting in March of 2026. Based on this hearing, the Planning Board could vote to move the amendment forward for a vote at town meeting, revise the amendment, schedule an additional hearing, and/or take no action. The proposed zoning amendment would create a new overlay district, generally in the area along the eastern end of Fairgrounds Road to Main Street, which would be an optional alternative to the underlying zoning which currently exists, allowing for a variety of residential uses and for dimensional standards that mirror those of the single-family residential Does anyone have any comments before I open this up for a public hearing? Perfect. We'll now open this up for a public hearing. If anyone is here present, please step up to the microphone to speak, and if anyone is online that would like to discuss this, please raise your hand icon, and Joseph will call on you to let your comment be heard. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak on the Fairgrounds Road Residential Overlay Zoning Amendment? Anyone online?
No hands raised.
If you'd like to speak, please go up to the microphone. Thank you very much.
Nancy Comey, 296 Fairgrounds. Now that I see the map, it doesn't really affect me all that much. But I guess for other members of Fairgrounds Road, I was asked, what exactly is it that you're asking to change? I can't wrap my arms around that last long sentence. If you could simplify it for me, that would be fabulous.
Sure. So, after some zoning amendments were put through last year, it allowed for increased density in that zone, that is the current underlying ag zone. And what this would do, at a 30,000-foot view, it would allow for increased density that is already allowed, which would mirror the single-family residential zone, like what you see above downtown.
So, when you say optional, you're saying that the resident can choose which zoning to go for?
Yep, so with this.
It's not some.
It is. So, with this overlay, one could still operate under the current zoning in the ag zone. And whatever one wishes to do under that zoning, whether it's coming in front of the Planning Board, or the zoning board, or you don't need to come in front of any board for a permit, you can still operate under that current zoning. If you choose and perhaps want some more density allowed, you can choose to operate under the overlay district zoning, which, under that point, you would follow those guidelines for that zoning. So, it wouldn't eliminate the ag, the current zoning there. It would allow the option that if you were trying to achieve something that didn't work currently, you could potentially look at the overlay district and say, this zoning is more conducive to what I'm trying to achieve, and I'm gonna use that zoning.
And importantly, you can't mix and match.
Yes.
Like, if there's a use in the ag zone, like agricultural use, you can't put that on a 10,000 square foot lot as you can in the overlay, which would be for residential uses.
It was simpler until you just.
It's still simple.
Okay. I won't worry about it.
Can I make, can I supplement the information that Matt shared? So, this, there's a page in the handouts that has both, there's a table of uses and changes to the table of uses, and then there's one that shows changes to the dimensional So, my observation, so if you have an existing lot, and you're not planning to subdivide it, really the only thing that's gonna affect you is the allowed uses. And in reality, for most, for the properties that are along, in the ag zone along Fairgrounds Road, there's really no limit, the table of uses is actually more permissive than more restrictive. Where the advantage comes, if you're in that zone, is in the minimum lot size, is if you choose to subdivide. And you might have, you know, you might have a single parcel where you can, where you say, hey, we can subdivide. We, you know, in the past, we would not have been able to subdivide this lot, but now, under the overlay district zoning, we can subdivide this parcel.
And notably, we put water and sewer in there.
Yes.
Quite some years ago.
Yeah.
To make this sort of development possible.
Right.
So, we're really kind of making use of what we already invested in, in terms of infrastructure.
I will say that, you know, when you look at the highway commercial, the section of the eastern zone where it's actually along north, north Main Street, the uses actually become much more, they're more permissive, where many of the things are required by, require special exception, they're now permitted in the overlay district. And that's, that's only on the west side of Main Street, where the overlay butts up to north Maine, but.
The green section.
Actually, it's, if you look out here, there's, the overlay is the hatch area, and it goes out to the east, or to the west side of Main Street, and it's, it's in the highway commercial there. So, there's, there's actually, it affects two zones, both the ag zone along Fairgrounds Road and the highway commercial along north Maine.
Up to the town line.
Ends at St. Louis Drive.
What's that?
Ends at St. Louis Drive.
On the west. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I was talking about the east end of like north Maine.
And there's, please, just one more question to verify. This activity for the overlay, will it be going on at the town meeting, or not during the ballot, but at the next meeting?
This is on the ballot.
It's considered day one of town meeting, which is the ballot.
This will be on a one.
Yes.
Yes. That's correct.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yep. Does anyone need the handout that describes the lot size and density that they'd like to see more? I have, if you would like to step forward, I'm more than happy to share my copy.
I'm happy to share mine as well.
Should I go?
Frank, you want this one?
Oops.
Here. I've seen enough of this one already. You're welcome to take the whole packet if you'd like.
Sure.
Sorry. How you doing, Frank? Good to see you.
So, a lot of the increased density is achieved with parcels that have water and sewer, or water or sewer. In the parcels that only have private septic and well, no changes to the lot sizes differ from the current zoning. So, for example, in agricultural zone, current minimum lot size is 40,000 square feet. If you have water and sewer, with this new overlay district, you could still achieve the same building with a 10,000, or about quarter acre lot size. Let me go to another example. That's with both water and sewer. If you, water and sewer, if you have water or sewer, instead of a one acre lot, or about 4,000 square feet, 40,000 square feet, you could then achieve the same building with a half acre lot, or 20,000 square feet. So, those are probably some of the highlights for increased density, if you have water or sewer, or water and sewer. If you are, if you don't have either, it does stay the same. And that's just for the ag zone. I didn't pull out the highway commercial. But generally speaking, where it affects the highway commercial zone is the lot right before you turn onto Fairgrounds Road, all the way up past, is that Piper Notch Road on the left there? Up to the town line. So, past Fairgrounds Road, up to the town line on, Plymouth-Campden Town Line, thank you, on both sides of the road, which is highlighted in the pink.
I think it's just the west side of the road, though, isn't it?
We have it highlighted, it's both?
See where it's, see where the lines are. So, it's just this side.
It's that, just there.
Yeah, where that line, where those orange lines are, that's, that's the zone.
Oh, yeah. My correction, the left, the left side of the road headed north on three to the Camden Town Line.
You can see some orange lines, they're hard to see, but it's that olive-green area with, and you'll see these lines in it, at a diagonal, that's the zone. That's the proposed zone.
Yeah, it's, you kind of lose the orange hatch and the pink of the highway commercial.
Might be. Some spectacles.
Still in a public hearing?
We're, yes. Did you have a comment you'd like to make, though, please?
Well, I was waiting for Frank wants to talk.
Thank you, ma'am. One quick question. It says, on the road, credits requirement, where with water and sewer, or with water, is that within the precinct, or people that have their home lines outside of the precincts, which sometimes, in my case, 1100 feet of my own water line, two town water, I am not in the precinct.
But you have your own private water line going up to it?
Private water line to town water, no, not, no.
Interesting. Joseph, can you offer some clarification on this?
Yeah, usually, from a zoning perspective, when we have a private system that connects to the public system, like was the case on Point of View Drive and Chatteran Lane, it's treated as though it were a public water system, since that, where we're looking at private.
It connects to the public water system, even if it's a privately maintained.
So, the pipe is private, but the water is public.
Right. And the private would be a well or a septic system.
So, he doesn't have to be in the precinct to qualify for public water?
If, if your parcel is within that zone, and you have a connection to the public water supply system, you should be able to use the reduced lot size.
But the parcel might be, the situation we're discussing is the parcel being outside of the zone, but they have successfully run their private water line approved to that system.
That's in the zone?
I think.
That's in the proposed zone.
So, I believe that the zoning boundary is clearly defined, so if the parcel is outside the zoning boundary, I don't think you would be able to.
Right.
No, it's, in looking at some of this, it is, some of these proposed changes are like the, the water line up each hill, for example, doesn't go up that far. Doesn't go all the way. So, if that parcel would be the one.
So, the water, the way that this would work is if the property's in the zoning district that we're talking about, it could have access to public water and public sewer, public water or public sewer, just one of the two, or access to neither. And it has a different minimum lot size, depending on which of those three categories it falls in. And those categories are carried over from the single-family residential zone, where it goes 10,000 square foot for public water and public sewer, 20,000 for public water or public sewer, and then one acre for a lot that has private onsite water and sewer, so a well and a septic.
Okay. Right, is that in to your question?
I've got more, but it probably crosses a little bit of the law system issue.
Please, if you'd like.
Everybody could tap on my line, because he's.
Do you mind standing up to the microphone? Do you mind standing up to the microphone?
I'm sorry.
That's fine, we just have some members of the audience online, but they can't hear you.
So, some examples would be that if line was running to a private residence, and it isn't big enough to accommodate another house on it, or a group of houses. So, it, it, there's a lot of gray.
So, I think the.
Some of that is gonna cross over to the water septic.
Well, there is regulations outside of our zoning ordinance for dealing with capacity of the supply. And you need to go through that for building permitting and all that anyway.
Since I gave you my.
Correct, but.
We don't have that.
You have a part, the water is here, you have a parcel lane, parcel lane. This parcel is developed. So, you put in a single-family house, front, uh, inch and a half inch water line up, that will handle his house. But these two parcels in between, if they were to tap on, it's not enough water, not enough space. So, who's gonna regulate that? You or the water sewer?
So, we're kind of getting deep into the weeds on this already, but I think the way that the lot size density, it allows for higher density if there's water or sewer, but if, if your connection to water or sewer relies on, I mean, I guess, that's a, I guess it would be a question for enforcement. Like, if you could demonstrate that you could connect, like, if you're willing to run your own private line to the terminus of that, then you could qualify for that higher density. But like, if you can't tap on to an existing line, then you're not served by water or sewer, and you can't claim that higher density.
Or one with sufficient capacity.
Right, right.
I guess I don't wanna really get into these.
Yeah, it is, it is pretty deep in the weeds for a hearing.
So, but, but my, my concern is, I would think priority-wise, the hearing will be out three weeks ago, whatever it was, on the overlay, the 3A, I would think that would be the biggest priority for the town of Plymouth. And to confuse it with any other zoning amendment, at this point in time, you're gonna get a percentage of the electorate of gonna vote no on all. And rather than confuse it, I would afford the Board to just vote one amendment in the overlay of the year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Molly McCann, quick response to that. On another perspective, since both of these measures are about overlays, and both of these measures are about promoting the type of development we would like to see in Plymouth, they actually are more aligned, and rather than thinking about, I don't understand this, and I vote no on both, since they are both actually trying to accomplish similar things, which is giving the town the power, if you want to say, or the authority to establish the type of density, the type of requirements, to promote. or the authority to establish the type of density, the type of requirements to promote healthy, if you will, development. I actually think these two measures are more similar than different and therefore you could think of them as aligned to a similar purpose rather than causing confusion from a perspective.
Thank you. And to sort of answer your question, Frank, about who would sort of regulate that, traditionally, if someone does come forward and there's a concern of sizing of piping and stuff, we usually don't speak on that. Oftentimes in our staff reports, we'll have, you know, Plymouth Fire, Plymouth PD, water and sewer, and we'll sort of have comments from them. Historically, we usually see them always signed off on, but I'm not saying that wouldn't change the future, but sort of answer that question is, we usually don't speak upon it. It's usually, Joseph will reference it out before the next meeting. You know, what does PPD think? What does Fire think? What does water and sewer think? And then we have sort of just their comments of no concerns, no concerns, or if there are concerns.
And I don't, and technically, I don't think anything in the overlay would actually come before this board. It would be a building permit.
Well, a subdivision would. If you, if someone were creating new lots, they, that.
Well, the subdivision, oh, the subdivision would.
You could, you could be creating a subdivision with ten thousand square foot lots.
Youcuses would not, but this division would.
Yes, but the minimum lot sizes would. And my, my thinking on this is that it's incumbent on the applicant. If there's a subdivision where somebody's proposing, you know, four or ten thousand square foot lots to be served by water and there's no town water to them, it would be incumbent on the applicant to demonstrate as part of that application how they would connect in town water and, and, you know, certainly a letter of support from Plymouth Hills Water and Sewer saying, you know, we have negotiated a, a manner to connect to, to water and sewer and, and applicant should be able to do that. So I mean, that's, you know, down the road, that's how, how I would expect to see an application come in that would utilize this overlay.
And I think an important part to remember of this amendment is it takes all rights away from you to do what you want with your land and it gives you incrementally a little bit more.
Right.
For basically single family housing. And it's not a huge change. It just gives you a little bit more rights than you have right now within the overlay.
Please.
I just want to correct something I said or if I gave the wrong impression. I actually am in favor of all of these overlays, but there are many in town, many, that are anti any changes to the ag zone. So if, if you can prioritize and get one through, then maybe we can come back with the others in another year. That is my sentiment. It was, I am not anti this overlay. In fact, I'm in favor of it personally. But many, the stigma has had, has always been, this planning board has put, put forth different changes to the planning board and you can debate whether they, who was pro, who wasn't, and they have never passed one to my knowledge. And so to just go for one very succinct, that the, anybody you talk to seems to be in favor of, might be something the board wants to think of. Because every, everything has been put forth to my knowledge, and I've been here sixty some years, has, has never, never worked. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that.
Nick Mason from High Street. I, I see both of their points and, and I agree. I do think that maybe it might be thought of as too, there'll be some people in town where it's too much potential change at once, so I do think you guys should expect like a little bit of a little bit of blowback or let the, the two overlay districts will be associated with each other. There, there'll be people who don't want one or don't want the other, who might find a way to work together to nuke the whole thing. My question was just for, for clarity, does it go all the way to the Camden Town Line or does it stop at the interstate? There's just a little sliver. I had to look it up. I didn't realize J and S, like they, they weren't even in Plymouth. They're in Camden, just barely. But like the Plymouth House, that area where it's, it's not on this map, but it is sort of on the west side of Route Three. It's just a little tiny triangle of Plymouth.
I see what you mean.
I didn't know if that is part of.
I mean, the, the zone is proposed as drawn, right? So it's.
It does look like there's a hard line at the interstate.
Main Street until it hits ninety-three and then it stays to the west of ninety-three.
Okay.
Until the town line.
Right.
To the town line via the interstate.
It's been historically commercial all the way to the Camden line.
Joseph, do you have any clarification on that?
Yeah, as, as currently, as the overlay district that has been discussed and proposed so far. It has been always on the west.
Excuse me one second, gentlemen.
It's been on the west side of Main Street until you get to the interstate and then it follows the interstate to the town line. So the portion of Main Street that crosses over.
Sorry, excuse me one second, guys. Online is very hard for people to hear us when there's idle conversation going on. Joseph?
So once you, if you can think about it as if you're driving, it would be on the left side of Route Three until you get to the interstate. And then once you get to the interstate, it would, the line would follow the boundary of the interstate north to the Camden Town Line, but Main Street continues under the interstate and it would not be on the portion of Main Street that goes beyond the interstate. So only on the west side of Main Street until it gets to the interstate.
Okay.
But including up to, basically Piper Nach road is kind of the, the last land.
Land that lies up there to the interstate.
Yep.
Okay, so then.
And I'm sorry, please continue. Just.
I, I was simply highlighting the boundary for Neil.
I know. We've had a lot of feedback. And if there wants to be conversation in the audience, if you guys can please step outside of the room. It's confusing to the people online. Difficult here. Please.
Again, Nancy Comey, two ninety-six Fairgrounds. When you put this on the warrant article, will at the bottom be any kind of recommendation of the planning board? If you vote on it, are you going to be voting on this at all to put it on, put it as a warrant article? I'm from a different town a long time ago and a different form of government, so I'm not really sure what your intention is to, for, for both, both sides of the explanation. And it's always good if you do recommend it, that you do tell the public that you recommend it. Or not, if you don't recommend it. I mean, I don't know how you're going to vote, but like seven to one or five to four or two to three or whatever it is. You know what I'm saying?
Yep. So tonight, we have a couple of different options. We could choose to revise something in this amendment, which would trigger a second hearing. We can choose to keep it as it is and hold a second hearing. We could also choose tonight to vote on it right now.
Move it forward.
And move it forward.
Will it come with some type of indication at the bottom for when people are voting at the ballot to read it? And, and then it's recommended by the planning board?
Yep. So historically in the town of Plymouth, it does say, I can't think of the exact word, but recommended by the planning board, and it does not actually have the vote number. The town clerk is actually, who organizes that, is actually looking into whether or not the vote that happened, you know, three to two, whatever, three to five, whatever it might fall, is included. Do we have any update on that?
I don't have any new information other than what you said. Generally, when it's a planning board proposed amendment, it says, you know, are you in favor of amendment number one as proposed by the planning board, which would amend, so forth. So it does say, specifically say where the planning board has put that forward. I'm not aware of any updates with regards to listing of the vote. As you said, in, in the past, historically, it's either said as proposed by the planning board or if the planning board doesn't propose it, it just doesn't appear on the ballot generally. But there, the exception to that really is where a petition warrant article is, is proposed, where the planning board may either recommend in favor or recommend in opposition. That's kind of a little bit of a different situation because the planning board recommendation isn't really a part of the, putting forward of that amendment. But I don't have any updates as far as any new information. I haven't had a chance to talk to the town clerk about that.
I would like to see, and we can talk to the town clerk further, but I would like to see that, say if something does pass to go forward, I would like to see the vote included. Sometimes they pass with a clear vote. Everyone is in agreement. And then sometimes they're very controversial. And I think it'd be helpful to the public if they do see that. Because I do think a lot of trust is put on us for that.
So that, that recommendation at the bottom only happens historically with the, with a petitioned amendment, correct? Because at the top of, one that's proposed by the planning board, it's, it's implied that because it's being proposed by the planning board, the planning board recommends it.
It usually says it on everyone.
Does it?
As, as anything the select board says, the select board recommends or does not recommend.
Okay, so it's a little redundant, but I guess it's fine.
Yeah, exactly. On everyone, it'll say.
Sure. Okay.
I will say, in, in no other votes that we take, I mean, they're, they're basically up or down votes. Like, we don't like pass a state plan, approve a state plan review with like a, you know, four to three vote. It's like, it passes or doesn't. We, we don't like have a notice of.
It's in the minutes.
Decision. That says like four to three or something.
Isn't it in the minutes?
Yes, it's in the minutes.
We'll just check in online. Is there anyone online that would like to make a comment? If so, please raise your virtual hand and Joseph will call upon you. Are there any other comments from the public with us here tonight? Please step up to the microphone.
Gina Ronaldo, Plymouth resident. Sorry, I haven't been to any other meetings, but, so I'm kind of just seeing all this for the first time. And so I'm just curious as to the, the development of the, the boundary line itself. I know we were already talking about the west side, but I was curious about the east side and then all the way to the, the highway there and just curious of how that was.
Established.
Yeah, established. That was a question.
Benzo Logue.
Yeah, sorry. I'm sorry. Yeah, just as far as thinking about what I'm looking at.
Joseph?
Recollection was that it was drawn to be as close as possible to the area in the master plan designated as a growth area. So if you look in sort of the, the back portion of the Plymouth master plan, there are some future development areas that are kind of highlighted in yellow. My recollection was that was the general inspiration, that and the water and sewer access being kind of two things that were considered. But there may have been other factors. I, I can't recall. As you said, it was, I believe, two years ago now. But I think that was the, really the master plan, future growth area was the primary sort of guide.
On the south side, once you hit Tiny Mountain Highway, you really can't go any further anyway.
Right.
And we wouldn't want houses over there necessarily next to the river anyway. And yeah, the west side was the limit of water and sewer. And I think there was a general consensus as well that the character does change a little bit there and becomes more agricultural and rural at that point. I mean, give or take a few properties that are different on both sides. Yeah, I think basically, yeah.
Okay. And then just sort of a general, like, I mean, I, I hear this is a, the long time development through various different avenues. I'm just curious as to, I, you know, I don't know all the property owners and all the lot, but is, is there a sense that, that there, there is an interest in going for this, like?
I don't know, I don't know if there's a sense of interest from the current parcel owners. I think sort of what derived the westernly development of the current proposal was the water and sewer. And I don't necessarily know if it was like the town of Plymouth, but just development in general that I think oftentimes that people, people find it easier and more conducive to those developmental areas being ones that are attached to water and sewer. So I sort of think that was one of the driving things on how far west it went. And really, that's the only basis of what I recall is sort of, you know, a couple of years ago when the discussion was starting was, how far do you go? Where do you stop? And I think water and sewer was one of the derivatives from that.
And as far as like hearing from the public, I mean, in terms of people who live there, we've heard from some and some have been in favor, some have not. It's a very small minority we've heard, we've heard from. This did come out of the master planning process. So a lot of engagement went into that process ten years ago at this point. They said, yes, at the town, we are interested in this and we're acting on that work we did for the master plan to say, we're fulfilling what we basically said we're going to do in the master plan.
What I found out, just speaking with people in that area, it's been a few years, but I do think it takes a few years and if something keeps returning, people are like, ah, maybe I should think about this or maybe I should pay attention to this. So I think it's, I'm not getting any really negative feedback. I'm, what I'm getting is, well, that might, that might be okay. They're starting to, they're starting to introduce themselves to it now. So I'm really not getting any negative feedback.
Yeah. And I guess that, that is part of the question too. Like are there lots that are, you know, open and available for, for this that aren't already currently just, you know, a typical residence that's on however three acres or something? I guess I don't, I just don't know.
It might open up existing lots to development because you can, you know, if there's water and sewer available, you can then create smaller lots from existing lots. I mean, it, it would apply to certainly to larger parcels if, if a developer wanted to do something, you know, the, the entire parcel would be subject, could be subject to the zoning of the overlay district. But you might see infill development too, which, which is actually, I mean, the, the whole point of the zoning changes that were approved a few years ago was to make infill development a little easier as a way to, to ease, ease the, the, kind of the cost of housing and, and the, the lack of access to developable land.
Yeah. Just having seen this now for the first time, I mean, I'm certainly really in favor to, to finding these spaces, like, you know, to, to really hone in where we can develop and specifically for housing. I think it's a, a plus. Thank you.
Thank you.
Matt, can I confirm? I think Molly suggested last year, I think the only, the only warrant article that had a planning board endorsement on it, on it last year was the petition zoning amendment and all the other zoning amendments. I think it's presumed that because the planning board voted to put them in front of voters, there's at least a majority of people who voted to do that, so.
And going to that statement, I think that we do enough deliberative sessions amongst ourselves. We sit here and we talk it out. I think it is presumed that we all have come to a conclusion. We've set our piece and we've made our changes personally, individually for what we think. So I think, I think you're right. When it's presented from us, I think it's presumed that it's okay.
It's really, it's a question for the, the voters at that point. Like I, I don't even feel like we need to endorse things. I think, you know, as long as we feel like it's workable and we put it in front of the voters, I don't think our vote matters as much, honestly.
Yeah, I think if there is to be an endorsement from us, I'd like the vote to be there or we don't endorse it whatsoever. And presumptively that the fact that it's there is.
I think the, I think the RSA, I think the petition warrant articles have to be, I think they might require a comment whether the planning board supports it or not. Maybe not, I forget. But the regular zoning amendments.
And I think last year was, was evidence of that because we had it, we thought we had it ready to go, but we still didn't, we weren't all there. So it didn't go.
Right. Well, this might be the last call. Are there any other public comments from our attendees online? If so, please raise your virtual hand to be called on. Thank you for your attendance. Are there any other public comments from people with us here tonight? With that being said, we will close the public hearing and thank you very much. It is seven sixteen. And we'll open up the discussion.
Do we want to consider this or do we want to have the other hearings and then we'll consider them, consider all of, all three of these at the end? It's your, kind of your call.
I'm, I'm fine with having another hearing on this. It's, I think we're at a straightforward point. I think we might have answered some questions for the public. And I, if I recall correctly, last year, some of the big hesitants derived from just being, the public was unclear on some things and that bit of being unclear drove some of the hesitance of it. So I'll, I will give you a second hearing.
I would like to. Yeah, I, I just have something I'd like to get some clarification on. It's my understanding that people who are currently engaged in agriculture in this zone are going to continue to be able to operate. And.
Yes.
There are, you know, we have a dairy farm, a couple of horse farms, a New Hampshire co-op. I don't know what they're going to do with the fairgrounds, but they might want to develop it commercially, so to speak, or industrially. There might, the question is, can people start up new operations?
If the operations that one would want to start up falls underneath either the current zoning there or if this were to pass, this new zoning, either or could still move forward and be started.
Somebody wanted to have a small business, a garage or storage units or or some type of commercial operation or which is acceptable in the ag zone.
To my recollection.
At this time.
After changes from last year, most commercial uses in the ag zone are now only permitted on a special exception basis. But I think if they do fall under all that and meet all that requirements, yes, they could still.
So that won't change.
Can I clarify that nothing in this proposed zoning overlay would reduce what's currently eligible for the ag zone? This only adds options. So, yeah, without getting into specific cases, nothing about this changes what someone can do in the underlying zoning of the ag district in this area. It only adds the option of using the overlay zoning, which is basically modeled on the single-family residential.
I just wanted to get it out there.
Yeah, yeah. So if this, if the overlay district move forward, if they can do something on December 4th, 2025, you know, legally abided by the zoning, I don't foresee why, any reason why if this passed next year and went into effect, that they still couldn't continue moving forward with whatever was acceptable today. Yep.
Even, you know, it it makes, it's worth stating that regardless of what zoning is, if there's a non-conforming use that's currently, that's happening, not any non-conforming use can continue until it's specifically denied or unless it ceases. So, I mean, there may be existing non-conforming uses that that may also still be continued. You know, new non-conforming uses are certainly not going to be permitted, but that's not, this zoning amendment has nothing to do with.
I just wanted that to be clear.
I appreciate that, Neil. Thanks for the question.
What's everyone's thoughts? How's everyone feeling? What's our consensus?
I would do a second hearing.
I don't know.
Sorry to come out.
I don't object to a second hearing. If people want more time to contribute, I certainly don't feel the need to rush to a vote on this.
I don't mind a second hearing. Do I think that we could potentially put it to a vote now and put it forward? Yes, I I could see that, but I have no objection to a second hearing, second public hearing to, if someone else has a comment that they'd like to voice by then, love to hear it.
Personally, I like to see the voters have the opportunity to vote up or down on issues that people are concerned with as a general rule. And I also feel that having more hearings is a good idea.
Why don't we have a second hearing then?
And just as a note, the other hearings so far are scheduled for January 15th. We have two public hearings on other zoning amendments scheduled for that time. So just as a procedural note, if you wanted to time it with other zoning amendment hearings, if that's the direction the board goes, those are currently scheduled for the meeting of of January 15th.
Okay. Do we need to put it to a vote to have it, put it to a second hearing or?
I'd like to make a motion to have a second hearing on January 15th.
Second.
If there's no further discussion, all in favor of moving this potential zoning amendment to a second hearing for January 15th, all in favor.
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions. Excellent. Thank you for your attendance on this zoning amendment, and we look forward to hearing from anyone on January 15th regarding this.
I'm just hearing some like rumbling from the microphone and I'm trying to figure out if it's anyone.
Like online or?
No, just like. Can you move your mic away from your computer? Oh, or is it that? Are you drumming? Okay. That's it. Sorry, it was distracting me. I apologize.
No, please. Something's blowing your attention away. Please let us, let us know so we can help.
I'll do my best here.
All right, excellent. All right, so we will move forward with our discussion of the Tenny Mountain Overlay District zoning amendment. Following up from the public hearing on November 20th, we will continue discussion about the Tenny Mountain Overlay District zoning amendment under consideration for town meeting of March 2026. This was a good meeting from my understanding on the 20th. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Yes.
I'll start us off.
Please, thank you very much.
Concerning the question about square footage and limiting square footage.
Yes.
I personally feel comfortable and confident about keeping our size limit as it exists now. Because mostly because I'm not interested in overcomplicating the changes and because I think we did a lot of very thorough thinking through of that size limitation.
Thanks for a reminder because I I believe we did the same.
Yeah.
Throughout the summer.
Yes, we thought about it a lot. And these things are editable. We can adjust them if need be in the future. And I think as it exists right now, I feel very confident about moving forward with the square footage specifically.
I would like to echo that. We did a lot of work to have pretty broad consensus on this. And we shouldn't allow ourselves to get held up by some fairly minor points along the way. As important as they may be in some ways, but like, I think it's pretty broad consensus.
We spent quite a bit of time on it and came to that broad consensus throughout the year.
I'm comfortable putting this forth, or I'm comfortable moving forward with the public comment unless if we are.
Well, it's not a public hearing.
We're not on a public meeting on this one?
Just discussion.
Oh, you're right, sorry.
We can open up for public comment, I feel.
We can have public comment.
So it's a question of, are we, you say stay at 150?
I I think we should stay at 150, both warehouse and industry.
I'm I'm fine with that, especially since there's underlying zoning that does not have size restrictions if someone wanted to use underlying zoning.
And how do we feel about the whole bed and breakfast, short-term rental language issue?
I have an opinion on that, too.
Which is a really, it's just a language issue. I think we agree on principle, but it's how do we change that depending on other things that change?
My opinion about the bed and breakfast question is this is within the Tenny Mountain Overlay district. So we have bed and breakfast as a as a use to be added to the overlay. We have a definition that exists in our zoning ordinance right now. And then there's also an additional definition of the proposed Tenny Mountain Overlay District legislation. So we need to reconcile these two definitions. It also connected to what is a short-term rental and do we want to regulate those? So my opinion is that I think we should not use the bed and breakfast definition as it exists in the T-mod and instead use the definition as it exists in our zoning ordinance currently because I think that's a preferable definition and a better definition of bed and breakfast and still keep bed and breakfast as a use in the T-mod.
That's fine.
I like that.
I also think that we should hold off on regulating short-term rentals this year.
We'll look at that in a moment.
Yes, we will look at that in a moment, but it's connected, so. Should we wait for chair to return or?
I will say, even if we decide to go forward with short-term rentals this year.
Yeah.
If we keep the bed and breakfast definition.
Yeah.
It allows flexibility there anyway.
Yes, that's true. Yeah. I mean, I think it's a good use to have in this in this district, this overlay district. But I just prefer our existing definition.
It needs to align. I agree. The issue of the, someone had a concern about the boarding kennels.
Oh, yeah.
I have raised that question to other people and there are some people in specific who are exposed to a kennel and it's probably the most annoying thing in their lives. And I think this is going to be a recreational area. We're looking for what, whatever is going to go up there, whoever does it. I think we should really think long and hard about a boarding kennel up there being in there. I don't think it should be. I think that was a good recommendation and I think we need to possibly discuss that.
Okay.
So I I think the assumption, I think when we talk about boarding kennels, we we make broad assumptions about inside, outside. I think it's possible you could have an indoor kennel in a large building that's well soundproofed and no one would ever know. I mean, I'm not sure that, I mean, we're making a lot of assumptions about, you know, how it's going to be operated. And if we don't allow it at all, there's potentially, I think kennel has potential high value for recreational development, especially if, you know, there are people that don't want to, that want to go be able to indulge in a day of skiing and not worry about their dog or something like that, you know? I don't think it's incompatible.
So I was, I would say if the kennel is also going to be keeping animals longer term, not having those animals exposed to daylight might not be a good idea. I would add to that, I mean, is there a possibility of mandating a larger buffer if you're going to have a kennel?
Yeah, that's, of course. It would be part of the, part of the overlay plan, right?
Yeah.
And they're already a buffer, but you can have a larger buffer.
More vegetation, more vegetation to muffle sound.
It certainly would be a mitigation. It's a difficult question. I can completely understand the concern, but I can also understand the compatibility.
Do these sort of districts typically have a kennel?
It's a good question.
I I can't answer that question. I don't know.
Or is that something you would do at home before you come?
I'm sorry?
Is it something you do at home before you come up to ski, I think is, yeah.
Oh, okay.
So again, this is a very small part of a very big project and we shouldn't get lost in it.
It is, but I just, I want to throw it out there. It has been brought to our attention in public the last one and I have had it brought to my attention on the street since then. So I think it's on people's minds and if you had to live next to one or vacate next to one, vacation next to one, I think you'd probably understand what they were talking about. So we can move on and get public input on that at some point. It may be, it may not be an issue for most. I don't know.
And it's also because we have a certain amount because we have a certain amount of flexibility in the PUD process. If we get input from people during the master planning process, we can incorporate that into some of our requests to developer as well to better buffer it or whatever.
Because it's a noise issue.
Yeah.
And if it does, if it does get in there and it does become a problem, who gets the noise issue? The police get the phone call?
But remember, this is, these are all subject to site plan review and like anything that happens in the overlay district is going to be subject to very specific site plan review requirements. And I don't see it as a totally incompatible use of, you know, being able to go vacation and not have to worry about your dog for the day.
Well, maybe we should hear from, I mean, we're not having a public hearing, but.
Did we, where do we lay on the bed and breakfast? Whether we want to remove the reference. I'm sorry?
That's what you get when you leave the room.
I know, I know. I thought when I came back, you guys would still be working on it. Came back, we were talking about kennels, I'm like, ah, shoot.
So my my opinion is that we should keep bed and breakfast as a use in the T-mod.
Okay.
But instead of using the definition that was written in the T-mod, we should revert to the existing definition in the zoning ordinance, which I think is a better definition of bed and breakfast. And I think it steps around the issue of, I mean, the proposed definition in the T-mod left bed and breakfast open for interpretation as a short-term rental. And I think that our definition of zoning ordinance is more specific and doesn't it open up bed and breakfast to that kind of interpretation? And so I think that's, I think it makes sense as a use in the district.
I will say there's.
And that aligns well.
There is a limit to the current definition.
Okay.
Which is, I think it's four units.
Yeah.
Which I've been in many bed and breakfasts that are larger than that.
That's true, yeah.
But if we keep it aligned, it can be congruent with each other in step.
And maybe we revise the definition at some point.
Yeah. All right, thank you. Thanks for catching me up.
You're welcome, of course.
All right, so we have touched on a couple of topics that we want to discuss tonight for the Tenny Mountain Overlay District. Thank you very much. Before we move forward, are there any other comments and then we'll ask for public comments.
Can can we make changes tonight to this?
We should, so that we can post, we can post the final.
That's the whole point. Okay, thank you. So were you going to say something? No, okay.
Are there any public comments on this? We'll start with anyone in the room tonight.
So again, this is not a public hearing, right?
No, just public comments, yeah.
On it for discussion.
Input moment.
Yep.
Tom Hookum, code enforcement officer, just real quick, just to touch on the conversation earlier about the the possible uses of kennels, short-term rentals and bed and breakfasts. Maybe one way to, excuse me, not get bogged down in the, in this overlay is we simply have definitions for a kennel, short-term rental. And then we we have them in the definitions and then we can have it in the use table as to whether you want to allow it. And in terms of kennels, we, you can also at some point adopt a section in zoning that sets forth requirements of buffer, whether it be a space buffer or a fence buffer. So I think personally, I don't see a need to have it in the language for the overlay district for any of these. We can simply keep it separate in the definitions and have it in the table of use because it might be something that you want to have used in in other districts as well.
Great, thank you. Appreciate it. Any comments from our guests online?
We do have one. Should be able to unmute.
Hey folks, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, Brian McKenna, Steve Keller, he's chief of staff of Stephen's owner of the current tenant. Really quick, just again, I want to reiterate, you know, our thanks to the board. You know, everything you guys have going on and you continue to keep the T-mod at the forefront throughout the year, which we truly appreciate. And just kind of one last pitch to get this two-town meeting in March of 26. We think it's critically important to have this out there for the great occupants. You guys have put a lot of time, a lot of effort, a lot of feedback. We've put a lot of time, effort, and effort into it. And again, we're just one voice among many that would be impacted by this, but we fully support and approve it and completely respect the decision on keeping the square footage at 150,000, it is. So again, we think this document is critically important to know the parameters in which we're working within over the next several years. We think it's a great, we appreciate everything you guys have done in the past year or year and a half to this point.
Excellent. Thank you, Brian. Appreciate the comment. So if I'm hearing a consensus from us tonight, we're going to keep the square footage warehouses at the same size that we had proposed previously. And as far as the bed and breakfast goes, we will mirror the current definition, the definition of the current zoning. Is that what everyone feels?
If we just remove the definition that's in the proposed T-mod language and refer to and refer to bed and breakfast, then the default is the town definition.
And I like that because if we do make a change. And I like that because if we do make a change to that town definition, it allows it to be picked up in that overlay.
Yeah.
In that, yeah, I like that.
It's not hard to revise it. The, so the current version that we have in this packet, bed and breakfast is struck from the table of uses. So, I propose that we put it back on.
Just with the existing.
Just with.
Without, without a definition. So, leave it in the table of uses, but without, without a specific definition. And automatically revert.
Yeah, without replacing the definition.
Correct. And then we also have transient occupancy use other than hotel motel, which I propose we strike.
So, just to clarify, that's not actually in the, in the T mod itself.
Okay.
That's, well, I guess it depends on what you're describing as the T mod, right? But that was some conceptual language, but is not, is, I would say.
It's not the fully revised.
So, the one that the board last discussed at a public hearing didn't include that.
Okay.
It's just sort of hypothetical conceptual language, but is, is perhaps redundant given, given the current discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I won't worry about that.
Do we have this, the Tenny Mountain Overlay District scheduled for a second hearing already?
Not at this time.
Okay.
Okay. So, we'll keep the warehouse square footage as previously written, correct? And then we will strike the definition of bed and breakfast, keep the term bed and breakfast, which will be picked up in the current zoning. So, that'll be a slight change. When should we consider putting this forward? It would still be the second hearing, correct? Yep.
I would move, I will move that we schedule a second hearing on the Tenny Mountain Overlay District for January 15th.
That'll be the fourth hearing.
Of the night.
Yeah. That was the second? Sorry. You're hanging it there, I appreciate it. All right, so we have a first and a second to move the Tenny Mountain Overlay District to a second hearing on January 15th. If there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Excellent. Thank you very much, everyone, and we hope you all can attend for the January 15th meeting. All right, moving on to a discussion of short-term rental zoning uses. Where do we all stand with this? I know we're not quite out of consensus yet. Is this something that we want to put together to put something forward? Is this something we really want to work on and get some more input?
Molly has an opinion.
Molly has an opinion.
Molly, do you want to kick us off again?
I, I really feel, based off our initial discussions, I feel this is a very sticky subject. I feel it deserves the amount of work we put into the TMOD this year. And I don't really want to rush it. I want us to be really thorough. I want us to get lots of information and really think it through. So, I, I feel that, you know, we have regulation of short-term rentals right now and, which is that they're not permitted. And I think for the 26, 27 year for us, this would be a really important project to have at the top.
I think we're, I think to the contrary, the opposite perspective is that we, we have a building inspector who's asked us to, to address this. And I think if he, if we ask him to start enforcing the current regulation, we're going to have a lot of people who are really unhappy.
And then we can regulate based off of their input.
Right.
Is my, is my sense.
I think, I think the burden of enforcement that's going to be placed on the town, if we don't put something forth to voters this year, is going to make a lot of people really unhappy. I think we'd be better off to put, to do a little work and figure something out and put it forth to voters.
I don't know if it's our responsibility to act because there might be a burden of enforcement. I don't think that long-term planning and the, the fut, I, I just don't know if that's, I, I understand that burden.
Yeah.
I really do. But I don't know if that, that sort of makes me feel like we're rushing something because of that. And I don't know.
We, we've been dragging our feet on doing something up to this point, like knowing that we're, we're basically condoning illegal use.
Well, we are not. I'd like to correct you, we are not. And I also do not want the impression that we're going to be forced to do something because of something that might happen enforcement-wise. Because we don't operate underneath that principle that because something could be forced in the public, that we're going to make quicker decisions to help achieve one outcome or the other. I just don't think that's the position of this board. You know?
I'm particularly concerned about life safety issues. And I think that that's what we should center our attention on, our focus.
So, what, okay.
I think life safety is a concern and, but do we do that for long-term rentals? Do we do that for regular rentals? And that's why I think that the time needs to be taken. Because there's a lot of, this just doesn't involve short-term rentals. Once we step into that, there's a lot of things that go on that are very similar to short-term rentals that need to be addressed as well. So, are you going to address the long-term as well? I mean, what, it's not, it's not as easy as that. And I don't think we've been ignoring it. We have some things that are really.
Have a full discussion.
And that, and that's what Molly's saying is it does, it deserves a lot of discussion and time. And does it need to be regulated? It's been going on for many, many years. And it, it's been going fine.
And to the point of view of ignoring it, we did talk last year. And we said, we're going to include it as part of Hop Round Two, our engagement and see what the town feels about this. And that, that part of the engagement has not yet happened.
Yeah.
And I, so I do believe we have a plan insofar as we want to get engagement first, which is not, I don't say that to ignore the point about the issues about enforcement and not enforcement of our laws and all that kind of stuff, which are real issues. I, I just think it's important to recognize that we did set forth a plan. And that is, we addressed it in Hop Round Two.
Yeah. Just to define life safety, because there was some question in the audience that I overheard. It means, life and safety basically means ensuring that there are fire extinguishers, ensuring that waste is being disposed of correctly, ensuring that there's clean water to drink, et cetera.
Smoke detectors.
Smoke detectors, carbon monoxide detectors.
Ingress and egress.
Are we having any public input on this, Matt?
Yeah, do we feel comfortable right now to open this conversation up to the public? Or does anyone want to continue?
I think it would be a good opportunity for some preliminary engagement with the public.
Excellent.
I agree.
Sounds good. With that being said, we'll start off with the members in the audience tonight. If you have any public comment, please step up to the microphone. Thank you very much.
Or questions about like what we are talking about so far. That we haven't really mentioned tonight.
Right.
Matt Comey, 296 Fairgrounds Road. One of the things about life safety, you're talking about life safety and people rent their apartments now. There's a lot of rentals in Plymouth, especially with the college. And if there's a concern about regulating that, I mean, I don't know how much regulation there is for that. Because it's pretty much, I want to rent my house, I'm going to rent my house. And then maybe there's some regulation. VRBO and Airbnb, you can't even get signed up until they do a full inspection, life safety, insurance, all that stuff. They make sure you have CO detectors and all of that stuff. So, people that are doing that, life safety shouldn't be a concern. It's more the rental properties that people have. If you're not aware of that, I think it's important to know that you get a life safety review and you don't get approved to be doing that. So, just something to think about.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Daniel Heidenreich. I just would like to know, sort of, is there a specific difference between short-term and long-term rentals?
Yeah, so we're categorizing, I guess, in general discussion, short-term rentals where it's a stay of less than 30 days.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, even a, even a month-to-month rental would be considered longer term?
Yeah.
Than one to 30 days?
And then I think sometimes it sort of gets in the weeds. I don't really think we've delved into it a lot. Where is short-term slash transient seven days? Is it 21 days? But I think generally speaking, we've, on a consensus accepted or thought in discussion that it's under 30 days.
Isn't it one, two 30 days? So, one day, anywhere, any number between one and 30 days?
We haven't clearly defined that.
Oh, okay, that's how I've been thinking of it.
And that's how I have too. And I think generally in our discussion, that's how it's been discussed. Yes?
Sarah Siniger. For the life and safety part, I do think it would be important to have a way to regulate it a little bit more. Because as a college student, if I'm going to write, to rent a property or get a short-term rental from someone to have like, stay up here, then it would be nice to know that I am not getting screwed over because they see me as a college student who does not have a lot of money and is like going for the cheapest spot.
Do you mean with longer-term rentals?
No, for short-term.
Great, thank you, sir.
Okay, me again, sorry. Nancy 290, Nancy Comey, 296 Fairgrounds. My husband and I have been involved with long-term rental and short-term rental throughout our 40 years of relationship. And I got to tell you, there's more problems with the 30-day-plus renters than short-term renters. The short-term renters are very respectful of the property. And if you follow the rules, you are a successful short-term renter. The agent. Secondly, if you folks think that this is a problem in town, I, I want to know why you think it's a problem in town. The townspeople have taken the burden from the college decision for only seniors to live off campus. And the, the economic di, dynamic that changed when the college made that decision. Several years ago, I was going to buy a six-bedroom, four-bath. Matt well knows of this building. The college decision made that an impossible investment. So, as you notice, the Airbnb amounts in town are, I don't know, 80 units maybe? And that's because of the college decision. It's really not because Airbnb is taking over the town. It's because it's the reaction of the townspeople and their ownership of their buildings to make up the difference of the higher tax rate and other things that are happening. This gal here is a college renter or her family might come up for Parents Weekend. If there's no place for those folks to live or stay, then their economic amount will go somewhere else in town, outside of town. And I, we believe that when we're offering this to families that come to ski or to your Parents Weekend or hockey game coming on Saturday or the parade or whatever it is, we're bringing economic to the town. Our rates are low so that people can go to the restaurants. We send out our laundry so the laundry folks out on Tenny Mountain can have a huge impact, you know, impact to their, positive to their business. It is a plus for this town to have short-term rental. And honestly, if you do that, there'll be a lot of other businesses coming forward, Alex Ray included, to speak on that, to say, just add it as, as, within the ordinance as an acceptable thing. We are tied to our insurance company on what we do and how we do it. We're tied to Tom Newcomb's building inspection for when we did upgrades. And to me, it's like a no-brainer. I, I don't know what the big problem is, why. Maybe it was one person that walked across somebody else's lawn and there was a discussion on why is that Airbnb person walking across my lawn? Well, it's because that Airbnb person may, may have been disrespectful of his neighbor. Who knows? But it was a one-time, one-off problem. I had problems with the parking meter the other day when I was having coffee downtown. You don't see me going to the town saying, take out all the parking meters because I had one problem. Just my opinion, thank you.
Let me ask you this question, Nancy, if you don't mind.
Sure.
And I don't need to keep you on the spot.
No, put me on the spot, I don't care.
No, so right now, it's just not permitted how the zoning is written. And I think one of the challenges that we're facing right now is, do we permit it? And if so, what type of wording and regulations? Like, there's a lot, there's a lot to making it permanent. There's potentially a lot to making it permanent. You know, what do we want to include? What do we want to exclude? Or do we work on it in 2026 and have like a really solid document at that time that everyone's comfortable with? So, I think that's really what we're struggling with is.
Well, if, if you, if you feel that you have to have a logistic and semantics, it's a matter of me just taking my piece of paper and putting a 30-day lease and having the person walk in my door and sign the 30-day lease and stay two days. There's, there's no, to, to me, it's already regulated, to my husband's point. Airbnb, VRBO, Evolve, all of them are very, very picky on who they allow to be on their website platforms. And, and it's not, it's not easy to stay with it as it used to be 10 years ago, six years ago. Just my point. You have bigger fish to fry. To me, it's like, still again, a no, no-brainer. Why try to add to your, add to your day?
I guess just to clarify, the reason to add something to our day is, if we add a regulation about short-term rentals, we're actually bringing them into legal use.
That's what I'm saying, just add it as a, as horrifying items on that.
That's what we're proposing.
Yeah. And otherwise, you're not allowed to do it at all.
My, my concern is that the longer that we go without addressing legal short-term use, the longer the town is subject to a lawsuit by an aggrieved neighbor who lives next to someone who's using a property as a short-term rental and is clearly not permitted by zoning. And they could have a, they could easily, you know, find, find fault with the town for not enforcing the existing zoning. That's my concern.
Is lawsuits from a butters.
Okay. If, if the.
Lawsuits from butters.
If it comes to selective enforcement, I mean, the town becomes liable for not enforcing their own, you know, if, if I'm living, if, if my neighbor starts having short-term rentals and it negatively affects my experience and I call the town and say, hey, there's a short-term rental, I'd like you to enforce zoning, and they don't.
Yeah.
I've got a basis, don't I?
Mm-hmm.
Well, Phil, I hate to be that guy, but I have a dog issue behind me and I can't get rid of those dogs. Because they're illegally running something that they're not supposed to have.
You, you could call our code enforcement.
She has.
Works both ways.
I have.
Tom knows you well.
I have Q and A.
All right.
I have different lines.
For what it's worth.
And I just want to make a few more comments. Tom Newcomb, Code Enforcement Officer. First off, I appreciate the fact that this board is putting some attention to this because as I brought up to you November of last year, it is a problem because right now the zoning does not allow short-term rentals. And so, I'm very appreciative of the fact that, that we're having this discussion. I would like to see something put in place. As even in the packet that I put together for you a month ago, there was the OSIP ordinance, which I think would be an excellent starting point. Even just take it verbatim. The only suggestion that I would like to see different with that is that it, that there be a special exception review by the ZBA on a case-by-case basis so that that way we can see that it fits in the neighborhood. But I don't think we need to overcomplicate it by getting into specific language about what needs to be included in a, in a safety inspection. We simply leave it up to the fire department working with me as Code Enforcement Officer to come up with, with a inspection checklist. And just to address one of your points, you asked about, do we do inspections on long-term rentals? And at this point, we, we do not. We do not have the manpower to do it. We'd love to be able to do it because we do get a lot of, a lot of complaints on the long-term rentals. But also, if you look at the NFPA, the National Fire Protection Association, they put out life safety standards. And they specifically have a difference in their life safety standards for short-term and long-term rentals. And it's because for a long-term rental, it's basically, it's a, it's a residential use. It's your primary residence. It's the property that. it's the property that you're, you're in day-to-day and you're used to. Whereas in a short-term rental, you're not necessarily familiar with it. You may not know, where are my exits? What, you know, what window can I get out of if need be? Where's the fire extinguisher? So, so for the life safety code, there are, uh, a differential between a short-term and a long-term rental. But, uh, I really frankly would like to start with short-term rentals in making sure that they're, uh, that they're allowable, allowed in town, uh, that they are, uh, that they've setting forth, you know, a twenty-four-hour contact, uh, that, and that they are going through a life safety inspection. And then, if we could do it with the long-term rentals, uh, that would, that would be great. Because we do see a number of issues where, let me just simple, smoke detectors. State law for rental property need to have smoke, uh, working smoke detectors and carbon dioxide detectors. And we're not able to get into those units to inspect them unless we get a complaint.
Thank you.
I just, I think it's important to keep in mind, um, that I think some of us would like to see these allowed. But it's by no means, um, something we have to do. And if we don't want them, we also don't have to have them. And I'm saying that only just to clarify language about how we're talking about this. It's something we can do to allow these. We have no obligation to allow these. And although I think a lot of us would, and then we talked about some of the parameters already, like owner occupancy and stuff like that.
I was gonna say, from, I'm Claire McCann, Plum, New Hampshire. I think my observations and previous discussions, um, from the meetings of the last two months that I've been able to attend, the basis of these concerns has been connected to the board's research in housing availability. And a lot of the primary concern, in addition to enforcement, has been, what is the balance of available housing in Plymouth? So, regardless of whether or not there is a market for short, short-term rentals, I think we have also been able to see through data that there is also a high desire for long-term living from a number of professionals in this community and from outside of this community. So, whether or not you are bringing in economic, uh, income from short-term rentals, rentals, that does not mean that having places for people to live full-time is not also an economic driver as well as a social driver. And so, as much as I appreciate the need for this enforcement, I also think that there is an existing law that could be enforced. Would it maybe in the short run have some economic, um, pullback for some people? Yes, it would. And I think if there were more people who are the owners of the working Airbnbs coming here and talking, then I think that would work towards something that would work for the town. Because I think we, I mean, it's, I have heard from this board that there are educators, hospital workers, nurses, uh, town workers who can't afford to live here or don't have availability of housing to live here. I do think that is more of a primary concern at the moment, because we do have hotels, we are here. And I have used Airbnb, and I understand that it's a really nice thing to be able to rent a whole house for a vacation for a family. So, I, I really can empathize with the desire to have those things available. I don't think that this is exactly an immediate concern as much as some of the other issues. And we have heard even, you know, there is a point of view of, are there too many things on the ballot? I would like to think and have faith in our townsfolk to be able to look at a lot of different measures on a ballot and have the wherewithal to vote on a lot of those things. But if it is a concern of some people in this town that too much is happening too fast, where, where's the line though? Does it, how can it work both ways? That you have too much in a ballot or not? Or is it only too much when it's something you don't wanna pass? So, I do think there are other priorities that the board has been working on a really long time and with great thoroughness that deserve your focus. And I think the long, the, the short-term rental issue is not as simple as just the town can use it. I think it does have a greater impact on the overall housing availability within the community, even if there is a strong market for short-term rentals, which I know there is, because there are in a lot of places in New England, and a lot of places where people want a vacation. So, I don't negate that. I also am concerned about singular entities owning multiple Airbnbs. At that point, it is your primary business, and I think you are taking away from the availability of housing in the town. That is why we talked about owner occupancy. If the original intention of Airbnb was to rent a singular place in a building with their host, that is very different than one individual or business who owns and operates multiple Airbnb locations in a small town. So, please consider these things, and it's, I appreciate that this is a complicated issue that has a lot of social and economic impact. And if it means taking time, I encourage you to take that time, even if it means that enforcement might be complicated, and I appreciate that it is. But as it has been said, it is not allowed. You could shut them down.
Thank you.
Nick Mason, uh, back into the weeds for a second. I know this is supposed to be about short-term rentals. First of all, I think maybe I was your son's landlord when he was in college. He's probably in his thirties now, or something like that. Right, Avery? Yep, all right. Couple, couple things, you probably did on move-in day or move-out day. Couple things, uh, Tom, there used to be, like, I, I'm sure it didn't catch everybody, but there, there absolutely was an informal, um, you know, like inspection, uh, life safety inspection where the fire department, particularly when Tom Morrison was the deputy chief and Casino Clogston was the chief, that era, uh, there was a good relationship between the primary landlords and the fire department, and it was not unusual to show him two or three apartments, uh, every summer. Yeah, yeah, informal.
Excuse me, Nick, if you don't mind talking to the microphone.
Yep, sorry. Anyway, um, anyway, sorry, side conversation. Yep. Anyway, there, there did used to be a, uh, informal and somewhat robust inspection, um, set up with, but where the fire department would send the duty crew down, and they would walk through and make sure there were ingresses, egresses, smoke detectors, fire extinguishers, et cetera. Um, it has sort of fallen off over the last couple of years. And the fact of the matter is, uh, I, I think they probably never, like, they got me because I answer my phone and because I know people. But if you get an absentee landlord situation where somebody doesn't answer their phone when the fire department is calling them for an inspection, they didn't get inspected. There, there was not a follow-through on the sort of more extraneous people. But I guarantee you, the large landlords' buildings got gone through certainly in a cycle every five years. And then the other thing I was gonna remind you is, in twenty-fifteen, there was a petition warrant article, um, that went before, uh, town meeting. It was put together in response to, there was, the, the partying was a lot harder back in that era, and there was a problematic House Twenty-Nine Merrill Street. It's a little tiny bungalow, um, and it was the type of place where there would be a hundred and twenty kids partying. Fifty of them would be on the roof, they'd be throwing beer bottles in the street. Um, and it butted right up against the residential neighborhood of Merrill Street. Um, it did become a problem, and then, uh, you know, it certainly was Doug McLean, uh, working with Mark O'Grant and various other people who lived in the neighborhood, created a warrant article, uh, brought it before the town. Some of the other large landlords, um, incentivized the student population to show up at town meeting and vote. Uh, there were, you know, I forget, something like a hundred and fifty PSU students showed up to vote, which is an unusually huge number for town meeting. The warrant article came to a dead tie and so did not pass. Um, and this would have, this would have put in a, a formalized inspection, uh, process in place. There was some scare tactics by the other landlords, basically making kids think that they were looking for your pot or whatever, um, and that they were gonna be coming through the room while you're there, or while you're out of the house, or whatever. So, there was some scare tactics and whatnot, and they incentivized people to show up by giving them pizza and laundry coupons and stuff like that. They showed up, they voted, it came to a tie and did not pass. It would have put in place sort of a long-term rental inspection, so, just a little history.
Thank you for sharing that. Appreciate that.
You can go if you wanna go. You don't have to say. Okay, great, stay then. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Any other comments from the public? Do we have anyone online? If not, we'll revert back to the board.
Well, I-
Yeah, what, say you.
I, I, I just, I've seen tragedies, and I just, uh, m- my dad was a Grafton County coroner, and he used to take me with him. I've seen a lot. And, and I just, uh, I, I, I feel very strongly about having pub- public safety in rental units.
What does everyone want to do with this? We are not at consensus of-
I'm sensing I'm in a minority of, of wanting to move something forward to hearing.
I think we should allow it. The, all the wax comes in with, what do you, how, is it going, how are you gonna regulate it? Do you have to do that now? Can we just allow it so that it's there, so that at least we've, we're okay with that? The people that are doing it are okay? And then next year, work on regulations for it? I see what you're saying, and it's, it's a tough job to, to know that they're all out there, and if someone calls and complains, and, well, it's not regulation.
Or if the select board randomly says, "Hey, we're gonna start enforcing our zoning and, and start issuing, um, assist orders to all the short-term rental operators in town."
And that's not fair.
But it's possible.
It is possible, so can we, can we-
On the allow it side, my, my concern would be, um, if we take the easy route of saying, "Let's just, like, allow it for now, and then we'll define it better later." There's a possibility that everybody is going to, like, all of a sudden declare themselves a short-term rental legally and under the most permissive way possible. And then, they're all permitted at that point. And you, there's no clawing that back again. And I would rather be, if we are gonna allow it, I'd rather be a little bit more, are you thinking about a yearly, like, preference over-
Are you, are you concerned that, like, they're gonna establish a use and then if the regulations change? So, you, you can write regulations so that it, it effectively, it applies to existing use as well as-
So, like, there's no grandfathered in, if you will?
You can do that.
You can't grandfather in life savings.
But you can a use, which short-term rental would be, um, depending on how you write it. And to go back to Claire's point, which we have talked about in this board before as well, by not having some guidelines in place, but have your regulation for term rentals, you are risking taking housing off the market. And I know you've raised this concern as well before.
We had it last meeting.
And, I mean, the whole point of so much work that we've been doing in the last few years has been to create more housing. And if we're overly permissive about this, um, we do have the ability to take housing off the market. And, or have housing that could be converted into, like, rentals that could be converted into longer-term housing, be converted instead into short-term rentals. Um, and that is legal.
That is, that is my main concern.
This is why I think the owner occupancy is a choice that some communities have made. Because generally speaking, it means you can't have multiple properties, and you're gonna be living there. And it's probably enabling you to afford a house as opposed to enabling you to just rent the property and not live there.
Right.
And that, and that even allows itself to more complication, because in the scenario of like, someone, I hate grasping at scenarios, potentials, ifs. Someone buys a house in Plymouth, and says, "This is where I'm gonna retire in fifteen years. Until then, I'm gonna go up there Thanksgiving, Christmas, and for a week in February to ski. During the other times when I'm not using it, I'd like to be able to produce some income or whatever, rent it on a short-term basis."
Towns have to find this.
Right, so that's a non-owner occupied, which I'm okay with, I think, less restrictions in that situation. But that's, falls under the non-owner occupied blanket. Versus a corporation that owns seventeen of them in Plymouth, which is also non-owner occupied, but it's, there's a difference there, and I, and to clearly define that, so it's like, I really don't wanna put more of a burden on the non-arc, on non-own occupied, where it's like, hey, it's an individual trying to achieve this goal theirs versus a non-owner occupied, where it's like, that's a corporation that is just operating on that premise with multiple. Yeah, so, and I don't know what the answer to that is, I just know I don't like that.
And worthy of consideration, and I don't know what the intent of any of these property owners is. We do have several property owners in town who have large numbers of properties that are not as easy to fill as they used to be, because they're at like student rentals. And if we made it much easier, overly permissive, to do short-term rentals, they could be flipped pretty quick, quick to short-term rentals.
Yeah.
And is that what we want, rather than flipping them to housing?
Well, like-
And again, I think it depends on how we write this, if we're gonna do something this year.
Yeah. I mean, I, my, I'll just reiterate that my main concern is, is, is the consolidation of how, our housing market into short-term rentals when we already have a hospital that can't find housing for their employees. Which is bad, because if we don't have a hospital that can employ people, we don't have a hospital. So, that's, that's one of my main concerns when we talk about this. And Matt, your example is exactly the kind of example I think about, like, somebody has something that they're renting and being at in this kind of like seesaw, which seems acceptable to me. As opposed to consolidating housing market. So, I don't know, I, I still feel very, very hesitant to put anything on the ballot this year, even though it's clearly a pressing matter. Just because I don't, I don't feel confident that I have the right answers, and I don't wanna make a big mistake in this legislation, I guess.
Especially when we do already have consolidated housing in this community.
Right, we do already have consolidated housing.
Well, and I think we've worked hard at trying to get housing in here, and that's, that's fine, that's, but when someone purchases a property, they can really, it's their property to do what they want. If their business is to develop short-term rentals, long-term rentals, whatever it is, that's their business, that's their livelihood, that's their, that's what they do.
And it's our job to set guidelines for that.
We can set guidelines for that, but it's not, I mean, we can do whatever we can to try to lay the carpet out for as much housing as people can come in here and live, and, but it's not up to us to tell people what they have to do with their house. If you buy something and you own it, you should be able to do-
So, so can I make, can I make, can I make an argument?
Of course you can.
So, consider how, like, consider that we create situations where, uh, it's very easy to build houses, affordability comes down, there are lots of homes that are built and all, all purchased for short-term rentals, and there's, there's no additional housing available for people who still wanna buy homes. Like, there, there's, there's a difference, like, you know, the, the whole point of land use regulation is to say, yeah, we, we recognize there's a place for rentals, but it, it might not be here.
And I do understand what you're saying, and I don't disagree with that.
If, if we, if we want this community to be, to be a place where people can buy affordable homes, like, one of the tools at our disposal is to say, yeah, short-term rentals are, are not permitted.
I just don't like to be, uh, I just, I don't like the idea that you invest in something for either long-term, like Matt's definition or what, and not be able to do what your personal goal may wanna be.
I mean-
I do agree, I, I, I understand your argument.
We're, we're talking about defining the rules, right, of a market? And, 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 you know, markets work, as long as all players clearly understand the, the guidelines and the, and the rules. And, and, you know, if we redefine that to encourage long-term ownership by people who live in the community as opposed to rental income by people who might wanna live here someday, I don't see that as, I, I, I mean, I think that's something the community should be able to do. It's up to the voters. And if we put it to the voters, right?
Yep.
I mean, I, it, it's great that people can invest and, and make money in real estate and, and have short-term rentals, but it's at the, it's at the, you know, there's a limited pool of affordable homes in the area, in the state, and, and, you know, generally, people who are buying homes- homes to be rental properties are buying homes that are generally more affordable and good first owns or affordable homes. Like, it's the same market. It's, it's the same reason that it's hard for people to, young people to buy homes. It's like, it's a struggle.
Now, are you still allowed?
Please.
I, I can hear this is, there's a real struggle here.
Mm-hmm.
And why don't, why can't you put a moratorium on, on short-term housing and a moratorium on enforcement of no, of existing for one year? Can you put that on the ballot? And that protects everybody until you come up with your definition? Because this isn't, this isn't something you're going to settle between now and-
And we can't define what gets enforced when, as this organization, this board can.
Well, isn't it your regulation that it's being enforced?
All enforcement is at the hands of the select board.
Correct. But, but the, but the regulations are yours, aren't they?
No, it's the towns.
But the, but, but under the purview of the planning-
We're talking about amending the zoning ordinance and the zoning ordinance gets amended by the legislative body of town, which is the voters at town meeting.
You were talking about putting this in front of the voters. I don't understand how it's-
Right.
What's different?
Uh, all enforcement falls to the select board or their designees. I think we've got a couple people. It's your call now.
Step, step on up.
I think we're, love to hear some of it.
Hello, I'm Megan Hayden-Rake, 109 Thurlow Street. I just, I hear, like, we have a, we have a real concern about housing needs within our community. And the short-term Airbnb type things are directly compete with that. What I hear is there's, it seems to be like there's a concern for corporately owned coming in versus an individual homeowner? And I'm not, I'm not real sure how that's different. If I'm not, if I'm not living here and I just have a house, like, how is that different than a corporation having a house? Like, for, like, how can you regulate those two things differently? Or do corporations get regulated differently? I'm honestly asking. I don't know.
I'm not sure our discussion has differed between an individual homeowner who has an income property versus a larger entity that has an income property. I think, we've talked about owner occupied versus non-owner occupied.
Right.
Right? And I'm not sure, like, if it's not owner occupied, I don't think we've really gotten any further into differentiation.
I don't think we can regulate whether, who owns it. Right? We can't say regulations aren't allowed to own homes here.
I guess to answer your question, it's just a feeling.
Yeah.
There's, it's, because I did voice that earlier where I'm like, non-owner occupied, you know, single person versus a corporation, like, what drives that? I don't have any good basis to stand on that. And I think that sort of goes to sort of like the discussion. I think that probably the consensus on the board may be that, yes, we all believe that we should get some regulation on short-term rentals. And I think where we're differing right now is, do we put something forward right now or do we take more time to work on a document? And I think that's where the back and forth is. But to, to non-owner occupied business or individual, just a feeling, maybe. That's, yeah.
Can I say something on that?
Please.
I think the sense is that we would, if short-term rentals are going to happen in this town, we would much rather it be of benefit to people who live here in some way. That's my sense of the corporation versus single homeowner. I won't put words in your mouth, though.
Resident, resident owners versus, versus absentee owners.
Yeah. It gets sticky there, for sure.
Again, Tom Newcomb, Code Enforcement Officer, just not to muddy the water anymore, but a possible solution to this might be that if part of the ordinance requires that it be reviewed in every instance for a special exception, so that it gets a review by the ZBA or if you would want to do it through this board. But then you could also set forth a requirement that limits that only so many short-term rental properties can be owned by associated entities. And as part of the application process that they represent, that they, that they do not have in excess of that number. So let's say you say maximum of three properties for short-term rentals that are through associated entities. So they make that representation. And then it turns out that they misrepresented, then their permit gets pulled. So I think there is a way to control it, to limit it, so that you're not having a corporation that comes in and buys up multiple properties. But I know there are people up at Tenny that, that own two and three units that are short-term rentals. But I think we can control that.
Can I have a question? How easy is that to enforce? I can imagine it's very easy to set up like a new LLC for each one.
Right.
And that all got different LLCs and you have to start tracking down, like, who's connected to the LLC? And I can imagine it being kind of a nightmare.
You'll never find them once, once they do that.
No, I, I agree that there is an enforcement issue there in terms of tracking it because they can simply put it in different corporate names. However, if you have them certify that they have, that they are unrelated entities, then we may not necessarily spot it right away. But we certainly then have the right to rescind their permits based on misrepresentation. It's similar to, somebody got a conditional use permit from this board to do an accessory dwelling unit back when they were required. He represented that, they represented that it was going to be their primary residence.
It'd only cost a hundred bucks to register an LLC at the state of New Hampshire. And like, if I were a landowner, I would say, this is nine, this is nine Pleasant Street LLC. And I'm on the, I'm on, I'm a shareholder, but this is, you know, Seven Highland LLC. And I'm also a shareholder, but they're unrelated entities.
But it, but, well, they technically are related entities because, because the person.
I don't think you can do it once, like, the entity is the LLC. And like, the members can change, but the, the entity is the LLC.
Yeah. But it is still related entities.
Gets money.
It gets really money to try to-
Oh, definitely. But it, it gives us some, something.
Yeah.
It's better than nothing.
Owner occupancy also gets to that, too.
Yeah. Well-
We're wrestling with this. There, it's, it's, it's easy to see why we have not come to a consensus on putting this on the, on the ballot. Like, it's not an easy discussion.
I just don't feel comfortable accepting another town's regulations. And yes, I'm sure we'd make some small tweaks and changes. I just don't know. Please, yeah, come on up.
One more time. Nancy, Komi, 296 Fairgrounds. Sorry, I haven't followed this till most recently. Have you done the research for the city, the town itself, to see how many actual residential buildings or town, townhomes are Airbnb and how many are long-term rental? And who actually is renting? Because I do know, I talked to John Scheinman a couple of years ago, and he said he's trying to hire professors and they didn't have a place to live. So even Laconia couldn't offer them something to live. And so I told him, I said, I will be having something built in a couple of years. And as soon as I do, I'll let you know and I'll be able to help you out. And then he retired. So I can't, I can't go there. I guess I'm, I'm just concerned that when this board talked about the number of ancillary units and all of that, and you folks were really inundated with the number of requests and then it came up to, the answer was five. You had five extra things on your palate to do a plate. This right here is, how many are we talking about here? Is it really, short-term rental is really impacting long-term housing for families? I find that hard to believe because I know families don't want to live in the college section. I think what you're doing with the overlays and lightening the restrictions to setbacks or less and this and that, that's going to help us build more housing in newer areas. The college has taken up most of the houses in the neighborhoods here. And I just don't see that short-term rental is a big problem. The problem is the house, the people who own those houses can't get the $4,000 per month of rent from the college kids anymore because they're not allowed to live off campus. You know?
But if those, I mean, alternally, like, from a market perspective, if those landlords who are looking at, you know, vacant homes that they use to rent to college students, they're looking at two things. They're looking at, okay, I can either turn this into a short-term rental or I can sell it. And if I sell it, it might be a single fam, it might be converted to a two-family or it might be converted to a single-family. Like, that's the type of, like, when I think about reclaiming former college rentals, like, if they were college rentals, they're going to be affordable because they're going to be trashed. And they're going to need a lot of work.
There's only five.
But, you know, for, for somebody, for somebody who wants to convert something that's been cut into four apartments into a single-family home, it's going to be a lot of work, but it's going to be affordable. And, and, you know, there is a need for that type of housing in the community.
Well, there's only five, five units on the docket right now that are available that are under $500,000 in Plymouth. So there's not that much out there. So build new, build more.
My, my point, my point is, though, if, from my perspective, if you eliminate the opportunity to make short-term rentals, those large homes that might be on the market for 500 now say, all right, there's no market for short-term rentals now, we're going to have to drop the price. And it might go down to 300 and become affordable for a single family. Like, maybe, you know?
Maybe owner occupied, maybe that's where you should go.
It's unfortunate, but it's kind of-
In fact, we've talked about doing like a 79 there or something.
What's that?
Yeah. Like along Russell Street or something.
Tax incentives.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
And it's hard to know what would happen if we made really easy regulations for short-term rentals in terms of larger property owners who are not taking advantage of it right now because it's not legal. And if it became legal, how many would flip? Which I think is what you were kind of getting at.
Right, right.
Right.
So I, I'm, it, what I'm, I'm thinking of examples where, you know, ownership, in, in markets that are basically unregulated, people with the deepest pockets are going to buy the homes. Like, you know, in Telluride, Colorado was a ski town. They, they were having a shortage of housing for, you know, workforce housing, affordable housing. They ended up building several units. They were, they knew if they, if they were sold to the market, they'd just become ski rentals. They, they, you know, the cost would escalate. And the town decided to own them and rent them to workforce housing. It's unfair, I don't think we're in the situation where we want to be owning property as a town. But at the same time, like, if you don't have some type of market control, then the highest bidder wins the home, will buy the home. Right?
Land, land bank them.
Right.
I don't know if we're going to do that.
Do you want any input on this?
I would love to hear your input, Judy.
Oh, hello, Judy Barrett from Barrett Planning. Everyone, welcome.
Hi there. I've been quietly listening away. Happy to do the discussion about Fairgrounds Road and Mountain. Nancy Hackett has been fighting about this for six years. And finally, with the threat of a judge making a decision for them, finally adopted in short-term rental regulations such as AR. And I think, you know, the reference to the situation in Colorado, that was started in the veil, essentially what those towns have done is created a bifurcated market by purchasing restrictions on houses to keep them within their rental purposes because the pressure of the seasonal market is just so intense that it will essentially overwhelm the rest of the market. So there is a difference of the validity to that approach. I guess the question is, is the demand in Plymouth so great for short-term rentals that you need to be thinking about those kinds of approaches? Or isn't it just easier to regulate and establish classes of short-term rentals that would be more or less okay? For example, host and stay, which is a situation where the person who owns the property is also there, living on the property while the short-term rental is taking place versus someone who's not there. It's a short-term rental and it may or may not be all that relevant. Yeah. That's one way the towns, I think, grappling with this, is host and stay, non-host and stay.
Yeah. And I don't think the demand in Plymouth is so great because I believe since the end of COVID, we've, we've actually, I think, have seen some houses come out of a short-term rental basis and converted in, back into more of a long-term basis. I don't think the house was returned to the free market for sale per se, but the rental model had changed.
A question for Judy. Judy, you mentioned host and stay and non-host and stay. Are there any other categories of short-term rental that you've seen that you could give examples of? Or was, or are those kind of the two major ones? I'm just curious.
So most of the ways I've seen this tackled are differentiating between, differentiating between host and stay, non-host and stay, but also regulating the number of contracts over a course of year that a short-term rental can flip through. So that you don't have constant change taking place. So you might have a total limit on the number of contracts or number of days in use for short-term rental, but then also regulating the minimum length of stay. I think for those kinds of mechanisms, there's an attempt to get out what kinds of STR activity are more intrusive on the level of those. So typically, a longer-term stay is not, I think, the general sense in the industry. It's probably not as consistent as a constant turnover. But that's how I've seen it done.
And I think it re- No, it does. And I think it sort of goes to our baseline question of there's, there's a lot to do on this. And do we write regulations right now to put forward? I don't, I don't think anyone is necessarily in a, in the thought process that we don't need to do anything with this and short-term rentals don't need to be looked at and regulated. I don't think anyone's necessarily thinking of that. I feel the challenge right now is, do we get something in place to put to town meeting for March of '26? Or do we use next year to then put something in place for, for the year after? That's, that's personally what I'm struggling with is, and, and I would like to write, ah, these are, you know, short-term rentals are permitted and then we'll actually write the rules next year. But that sounds like that could become an absolute nightmare potentially, like-
I will say two warnings that we've heard from a few people about a zoning amendment being able to tank other zoning amendments. This is the one. And I'm not saying it will. But if anyone has the opportunity to do that and cause a lot of consternation, it's this one.
Good point. Yeah.
Especially if we haven't engaged the public sufficiently about it before making a decision, which we haven't.
What's our schedule for the HOP2 grant? Are we going to be able to solicit input for, from the public on how to best handle short-term rentals in the next few months?
Are you asking me?
I'm not sure.
I was looking at Judy's-
Who's in charge of that for us?
I think you have the answer.
Where are we now? Joseph, Judy, what are our schedules like?
Judy could answer.
Well, yes, I would like, I would want, for sure.
I would as well, especially if we're doing organized outreach with assistance and help from Judy. I would 100% want that included.
I believe we talked about that in the past, too.
We have.
We have, when we've touched on this issue in the spring, we, I think one of the reasons it didn't make it onto our priority list in the spring when we did that prioritization was because we said, you know, a really good opportunity to learn more about this would be through the HOP2 grant.
And it does relate to housing.
Yes.
Because it affects the housing market.
Yes. I mean, it, this is torturous. And I, I overall, I, I can sympathize completely with- with, you know, I want people who live here to be able to afford to live here. And I understand affordability is really difficult and not necessarily controlled all at the town level. But again, I really want to regulate this correctly. And I just don't feel I have enough information to do that. And I, I appreciate that Tom provided us with examples, but I think those examples still take study and I think they still take tailoring and I think they still take input from the people who live here. That's, I think that's where I'm at, even though I'm, I'm still torn.
And I do think that input from the people that are, that do have the short-term rentals that don't live here.
Sure.
I think it's to let them know that we're talking about this so they can either zoom in or whatever. I, I do, I think you're right.
Yeah, sure.
And those affected.
I think I want a meeting personally.
Okay.
Is there another?
I want both.
Both, yeah.
Do you think you could talk a little bit about if you have a rough sense for what your vision over the next several months of the HOP two point O engagement plan as it stands might look like? Maybe that'll help folks get a sense of what the, what the timeline for some of the other engagement might be.
Yeah, we'll see part of the problem with this grant is there's a lot of engagement built into it.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, we did the six-point story, which was huge help in a little sort of initial survey. We can certainly do a meeting. I'm pretty sure it doesn't, there is a meeting in the budget, just because I put it there. But there's not a lot of engagement built in. So I think if we're going to do a community meeting, you probably ought to think about what are you going to focus on so we can design something that's coherent for people. And if, you know, if it's sort of these kind of unique issues that are troubling Plymouth, like short-term rentals or what's going to happen with the housing that's historically occupied by colleges, you know, how do you see those areas of the town evolving? You certainly can design and do a community meeting. I don't think that's a problem. I think it's a question of what you want to get from the public that might inform near-term, I mean, this year, next year, kind of zoning decisions. But also, you know, we're thinking about a couple of perspectives of the land use component of the housing element. So, you know, I think you've got to tell us what it is, what the big questions are that you want us to address so we can design meeting accordingly.
I need a reminder of what our HOP two grant was focused on.
It's a housing element for your master plan.
Master plan, thank you. Okay. I, I remember now.
And I mean, really sort of funded it, but.
Yeah.
There's just a lot of budget for engagement. So that's why you haven't seen me raring to go around to the budget meetings because I just don't have the budget. And do a meeting. I just wanted to be focused on what it is that's most wanted here from the community.
So.
Sounds like this is a topic that would be in the mix.
Yes.
So if we're keeping the thought of housing master plan as the 30,000-foot view of the premise, I think we can incorporate short-term rentals.
Absolutely.
And because we can also derive the information from that to zoning for our active zoning amendments. Is college, is college housing something that we're going to include in that or?
Something that's come up several times, and we've had this same conversation.
Yep.
Was A, are we interested in allowing more housing along Tenny Mountain Highway? We asked that question before. And B, and it relates to our charrette that we're doing is downtown, which could include Russell Street. It doesn't have to just be village commercial. It could be a little bit more expansive to include like Russell Street and some of the college housing as well, as broadly part of our downtown core.
Yep. I wouldn't want to duplicate efforts and I 100%, I think I like the idea. I don't know if I'm hesitant to include it too much because I want to make sure with the lack of funding for this grant that we get the most, you know, most help from Judy that we can. And I'm open to that, but my hesitance would be, would we be duplicating what's going to happen in the charrette?
I don't think so.
Okay, all right.
I guess if it's a housing component of a master plan, part of what we're trying to figure out is how we envision the future of housing.
Yeah.
I think part of that is like, where?
Yep.
And we have talked about some places that we've kind of waxed both ways on. And if we could get more information on those places.
Yep. And I think another topic would be size. That is always controversial.
Like units, maybe?
Yep, unit, yeah, units per building, you know, square foot or si, pretty much units per building.
Or is it units per building? Or is it like?
Building.
Building types.
Right. Building types, units per parcel, buildings per parcel. That seems to always be a contro, controversial where we've never really had a consensus from the public.
Yeah.
All right. Does that answer a few of the questions, Judy, for some things we can focus on for the engagement?
Yes. Yeah, I guess a question I have is, if you're thinking about trying to do anything around SDRs for next year's town meeting, is there even time to do this? Or are you thinking that the meeting is really going to benefit for the housing, the content of the housing element and perhaps decision-making next year?
I, I don't think there's any hope of preparing something for this year's town meeting.
Because basically our deadline to notice is this month.
We, we need, we need to have it written now if we're going to go to hearing for this year. That's okay. No, we, we've got some time.
No, it would be for 2027, I believe.
Okay.
We have some heat on us to do it quicker.
We do.
I don't think we're getting there.
I, I do think for the sake of simplicity, we've, we've put two years of work into the two overlay districts. I almost think we'd be better off to limit the number of zoning amendments we put forth so that people can feel like they have a good grasp on the two that.
Yes.
I, I would like to move forward.
Yes. TMOD is a lot of information to understand.
It is.
So it's those two?
I, I have, I have faith in our voters, though.
If, that's all the statutory stuff. And it was one really small one, right?
ADU owner occupancy is small.
So those are the four right now that we're considering.
Yeah.
Those four are on January fifteenth's public hearing.
Yep.
Tenny Mountain Overlay District, second hearing. Fairgrounds Road Overlay District, second hearing. Owner occupancy of accessory dwelling units, second hearing as well. And then several statutory zoning amendments that were dictated to us from the state. That'll be the fourth one, also second hearing for January fifteenth. So those are the four hearings we'll have as of right now.
It's going to be a big day.
Yeah. All right.
Wow.
Judy, do you have enough direction for the, the public engagement that we're going to do meeting? Just from our conversation tonight, do you have enough direction to that you feel like, all right, this is the information we sort of want to gather out of this meeting? Or is this something we should discuss again and send something over to you?
I think I have enough right now. I think what might make sense and maybe would be helpful to you guys, Matt, is if I take what I've heard. Creates sort of an outlier description of the meeting. Send it to Joseph and you guys can get around it in the next meeting.
That would be, that'd be excellent.
We do have a work session in January that is on the day, it's on, it's on the 22nd because of the rescheduling of it.
Okay, so we have a work session on the 22nd.
Piled all the hearings onto the business.
Okay, so if. Who, after March?
I was going to say, I think, I almost think it'd be better to do it like at the end of February.
Before town meeting.
Only because there's a lull. We can't have hearings leading up to town meeting. And if we wait until after town meeting, people are going to be disinterested.
No, we also have a lot of engagement usually at the end of town meeting.
Right, right. I mean, you, I think there's a sweet spot of having people's attention before town meeting. And I think once we get through town meeting, everybody just wants to be done with it. And I don't want to think about town politics for another six months or whatever, and we're not going to get any engagement.
That's a good idea.
And if the formulation of this board changes after March, I, I, we've already done so much discussion with this group of people, I would, don't want to lose that momentum.
Yeah, I agree. Those are good points. Thank you.
February, I think.
So I can make sure that you guys, the early part of the month is going to be away. Believe it or not, my gift is winning an anniversary to the very good meetings.
Wow.
And I will not be anywhere near people all time. I'm going to be away.
So you're thinking February 29th? Okay. Well, that's excellent. Have you seen the great Airbnbs we have listed in this town?
I was in an Airbnb from my 29th wedding versus just not being in the cold. It's about the overlooking the ocean, okay? That's my idea.
You're miss, you're missing out.
Well, that sounds like a good town plan.
Anyway, I'll have an outline of the meeting. Send it to Joseph. You guys can kick it around and we'll plan on like booking a date for that in February. I'll just look back at what I said to Joseph so you can literally know what date might work. Now we can start thinking about engagement for that meeting.
All right, great. Any other, any other questions for Judy? Thank you so much for attending tonight.
Yes, thank you.
Likewise, thank you.
Bye.
Bye-bye.
I just have a quick question.
Please.
Based on, on a previous comment, is it, would it be possible to find out, A, I'm, I'm sure you know, like, how many properties are in Plymouth? And actually, of those properties, what percentage are short-term rentals? Because I went on Airbnb, Airbnb, and I was looking, but sometimes those, the ones that show up, it depends on the date range that you're picking. So I, I was having trouble trying to find if there was a, you know, a conclusive overall summary of, of what offerings are there. So I'd be really interested to know, and it could possibly be helpful for this meeting to be able to tell people, okay, in Plymouth, we have, we actually have this solid number of short-term rental properties that are being offered. Of that percentage, this many have registered either or gotten a special exception through the zoning board. And this percentage are just kind of going Wild West style without any regulation. I, I personally would really like that information. I don't know how.
They're all Wild West style at this point.
Yes.
They're all what?
Well, haven't some of them like registered as a technically the, the tourist home or something that was mentioned?
One.
Just one? Okay. It was, I was like, no, it was mentioned before.
There is one.
Okay, there is one. So I actually would be really interested to know how many there are.
And even he probably would say that he really doesn't know for sure because there's so many companies.
Is there a way to find out as best as possible? So we have the most accurate.
Cower the internet.
Factual knowledge.
You probably, you probably have to, so there's a couple of different dimensions to it. Of course, there's, there's the room and meals tax. You could ask the state if there is a list of properties available that are paying room and meals tax in Plymouth.
Actually, Airbnb is supposed to register you through them, right?
Yes, and some platforms.
Is that publicly?
I don't know. I've never sought that information from the state, but that, that could be a way. I mean, it's hard because not every short-term rental is on Airbnb, right?
Right, right.
Some short-term rentals are an ad in the local newspaper or a word of mouth or, you know, Craigslist, right? So it, it is very hard with, you know, there is, there was a piece of legislation proposed this year that would require the state to establish a database of all Airbnb-style short-term rentals. That has not been signed into law or passed. It's, it's just a bill. So keeping an eye on it. And if that were to go to effect, there would probably be some data. But the best, I would think, is probably if someone wanted to look at room and meals tax paying entities.
You'll get the ones who.
I only mention it because of that counterargument of, is this actually causing a problem in Plymouth? And I think that's probably a question that will come up again of, you know, is, is this something that we're fearing because it hasn't happened yet? Or is it, is it actually a real fear that short-term rentals would, would become more prominent? So, so what is, what is the reality of the spread of short-term housing as compared to rentable, long-term rental housing? I, I feel like that's a question that more people than me are going to want to ask. It's a good question.
Thank you. Yeah, I think that's some difficult data because of everywhere it's spread out. Because you, we hear it in, you know, hearsay and passing and from members that speak. I've never actually seen a actual hard firm number, difficult data to get.
I think Tom has some awareness only because like he, you know, people reach out to him.
I think he has a pretty good handle on it.
I think he does. I think he does.
Excellent. Any other public comments on short-term rentals and what we've discussed before moving on? All right, excellent. Well, great discussion tonight. Is there any other business or unfinished business of the board, members, staff we need to discuss?
I don't have any other business at this time.
Excellent. I look forward to seeing a syllabus from Judy with some outline. Great.
I'll share that with you as soon as I get it. And if it's received in time, I can even send it before the December 18th meeting. We do have two applications that will be on the agenda.
Okay.
So we have some business to hear, but.
Great.
I don't, I mean, I don't know, obviously, if those are going to be short or take a long time, but at least the board could get eyes on it and decide if it fits in the schedule to talk about.
Excellent. Thank you. Are there any public comments before we adjourn for the night? Anyone online?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions?
Aye.
Thank you all for your attendance tonight.